Welcome to the Thursday, July 7, 2022 meeting of the West Carmont Local School District Board meeting. Mr. Romano, could you take the role please?
Yes. Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Present.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Present.
Mr. Chumley?
Present.
Mr. Patton?
Present.
All present?
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a need to go into executive session. First reason is for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee.
Okay, we're returning from executive session. Could you take up role, please, Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Present.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Present.
Mr. Chumley?
Present.
Mr. Patton?
Present.
Five present.
Please draw me into plaid your seats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, looking for a motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes, I'm moved.
Okay, Mrs. Delaney is second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Patton, any discussion? Mr. Romano? Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five yes? Thank you. Public commentary, we have a card from Mr. Mark Gillespie. Would you come up and state your name and your address? And please keep it to three minutes.
I'll try. You can tell me to sit down. Mark Gillespie, 4574 English Creek Drive. Been a resident of West Claremont School District since 1991. No children who've ever gone here, but I have had grandchildren go here, actually under open enrollment, and that's what I would like to speak about tonight because as a person who voted for the last levy, as a person that has seen the school district change, the fact that we turned our back on these children who we had invited into our school, I find disappointing. I understand that the policy is that open enrollment is year to year. We will decide whether or not we're going to allow them in. I also know the precedent has been, once you're in, you're in. Because my grandson started here at seventh grade, and he's now a junior in college, and I know it's at least been that long. It seems to me like it's inviting a child into your home, saying, we're going to love you. We want you to be part of us. We're going to nurture you. We're going to give you awards. We're going to cheer for you. We're going to do all these things. And then, when the money goes away, too bad, you got to go. I find that hard. And I know that the state changed the way they fund students, and I know the money. And I will tell you, first of all, I do not know everything that went into the decision. I wasn't there. Obviously, I'm on the outside looking in. But I know the state changed the way they fund the students. But I also know from the state funding office that they have told me that West Claremont is getting the exact same amount of money this year as they got last year. Mr. Romano, you may tell me that's wrong. But if that's the case, then we are getting that amount of money based on those students who were here last year. And we're telling them, because that money doesn't follow you directly, you've got to go. That disturbs me. I look on this letter that Ms. Adams sent out, it's a rejection letter, and I've seen a couple of them at different levels. And it talks about student-teacher ratios being out of whack based on board policy. I think that this decision affected somewhere around 160 students who were rejected. I'm assuming that not all of those were students who were here before, so maybe 140 were here before. The person that I spoke with-
Ten seconds.
How long?
Ten, um, seven, six.
Seconds left? Okay, I'm going to ask you for two things. Rescind the decision, and number two, please make it policy for the future that if you're going to invite these children in, you're going to educate them until they graduate or leave the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. 6.01 personnel, Dr. Folds.
Good evening, members of the board. This is Adams, Mr. Romano. In front of you is the personnel agenda for July 7th, 2022. On the agenda today, we have the resignations of nine teachers, one administrative assistant, one secretary, and two custodians. We also have the proposed hiring of 12 teachers, one custodian, three paraprofessional aides, and a transfer of a four-hour custodian to an eight-hour custodian. On the last agenda, we approved Tracy Ray, our new incoming middle school principal, for additional hours. However, we needed to adjust the dates, and I inadvertently put an E on the end of her first name. So we wanted to make sure that we put this back on here to get corrected. On the agenda, we have the proposed salary placement and adjustment for 13 teachers. These are teachers who have been continuing their education, and they've either gotten their masters or masters plus thirteen, fifteen, or the masters plus 30. So we're excited that they're able to move up on our salary scale. We're excited that they continue to professionally develop and bring that knowledge and experience back to West Claremont. We also have the proposed approval of supplemental contracts for two football coaches. Included in this agenda is the proposed approval for the hiring of multiple classified substitutes. And then finally, on the work beyond the contract section, included in this agenda is the proposed approval for the following payments of the Health Insurance Committee stipend and the Enrollment and District Support stipend. This concludes the review of the personnel agenda. Submission for your consideration.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
I did want to take a moment, if I could, to just talk, give a teacher shortage update that we're working through, as many of my fellow colleagues across the greater Cincinnati area and the state of Ohio are feeling. Back on May, at our May 23rd board meeting, we discussed how the teacher shortage was impacting West Claremont. Again, if we think about this from a macro level, in 2008, for every one position open, we had six people wanting to fill it. And then, to now, where every one position is open, we have .6 people wanting to fill it. And that's kind of a state phenomenon that we're dealing with. What causes some of this? Well, at the university level, there's not as many students going into public education, which means there's not as many graduating and entering the educational field. And on top of that, with the teachers we do have, private industry is poaching our staff. Our staff is educated. Our staff is trainable. Our staff thinks outside the box, thinking creatively and innovatively. So we put a great deal of time and energy into supporting their growth, and it makes them very attractive to private industry. And as a public entity, we cannot compete with the flexibility that private businesses have with benefits and monetary incentives. So we've got a lot of things going against trying to keep our teachers here and fill our spots. So you look at, as enrollment increases and more students show up, we need more teachers. And at the same time, the amount of teachers produced by the universities are drastically declining. That leaves a teacher shortage gap for all districts in this area to fill. We were hopeful that it wouldn't hit West Claremont so quickly, but we're already feeling the pain of that. At last count, we're about 13% of our teachers, our teaching staff is turned over. We use exit surveys, reasoning that's listed on the resignation, or sometimes personal feedback on why. And we've been able to, so far, group those into eight categories. I hope to go, I plan to go into the percentages in more detail in September at a board meeting, but for now, it's those categories are retirement, moving out of the area or state, staying home for childcare, or family leave, or medical reasons. They just weren't a good fit in West Claremont, better location to home. They didn't feel that they were adequately supported, and then they've left the profession altogether. So that's kind of makes up where our teachers are going. I look for patterns from grade levels. So if you look at our elementary and our secondary, if you divide them in two halves, that's about the same amount of students that we serve in terms of student-teacher ratio. We've got a little over 4,000 in each. We had 38 teachers at the elementary level leave, and we had 35 at the secondary level. And looking at grade levels, looking at the span of these categories, there's not really a pattern that makes sense, other than many people are choosing different pathways for different reasons of exiting our area. This is a growing trend, and we will continue to see this in public education. We are, as West Claremont, we're diving into how can we support our teachers to stay with us? And then, how do we attract new teachers? Mr. Romano said that the other day, it's typically, my branch has always been attract and retain, and now it's retain, and then try to attract those that we can't retain. And so we're spending a great deal of time into that. I do want to call your attention to Ohio Revised Code 3319.15. That's termination of contract by teacher. It states that no teacher can terminate their contract with a district, school district, after the July 10th date without approval from the district. So that is Sunday. So starting July 11th, if anyone wants to leave our district, we'd have to bless that. And part of that, a big reason of that is the state understands the closer we get to August, the harder it is to find people to fill those roles. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Folds.
Oh, you're staying up there.
I'll be a fifth-
Yes, he has a few items.
All right, next on the, the, Doc, is the memorandum of understanding. So before you is a resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding between the board and the HOPE Classified Bargaining Unit. In its current form, the HOPE Classified Bargaining Agreement does not have a specific section allowing for payments for two individuals who participate in the Health Insurance Committee. This memorandum of understanding will allow this, which mirrors the language in the WCEA Teachers Collective Bargaining Agreement. So this concludes the review of the memorandum, an understanding submission for your consideration. Next in our docket, we have the administrative and non-certified exempt salary schedules and sub-miscellaneous salary schedule. Each year at this time, we bring the annual disclosure of administrative and non-certified exempt positions and salary ranges and conditions of employment before the board for updating. These have already been approved in the past, and there is no new action on the salaries levels, but updates on position titles. These salary ranges reflect the 1% increase in the base, which matches what was given to all staff in the West Claremont School District, so nothing has changed. This year, we also included the miscellaneous and non-certified substitute salary schedule for update as well. So this concludes the review of the salary schedule and update for your consideration.
Item 6.04 of the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes, and the minutes that are listed are for June 13th. I believe the motion says June 27th, but if we can change that to June 13th, 2022. Item 6.05 is the donations. There was one donation from Child Focus, donated $1,000 to the hear and happy staff recognition. And so the request on the consent agenda was item 6.01 through item 6.05, as recommended.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Patton, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Chumley, any discussion? Mr. Romano?
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent's business?
Turning it over to Dr. Foltz again.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Before you is Board Policy 8451. It is the head lice policy. I would fail horribly trying to pronounce its petty.
Prediculous.
Thank you, thank you. We are recommending a change in our head lice policy from a no-nit to a no-live lice approach. This is the recommendation from the national organizations, and that, and a change in many districts are an act. This revision could also have a positive attendance impact on some of our most vulnerable students. We are recommending we waive the first reading and seek board approval this evening. Our reasoning for this is that we will be recommending to the Board of Education, that the Board of Education approve the student and parent handbook, and we would like to include this information in that instead of waiting until August to then have to adjust the handbook. So Mr. Patton and Ms. Delaney are on the policy committee, they were made aware of the recommendation last week, and that the proposed policy revision was included in the July 1st Board of Education update. So Superintendent respectfully requests to waive the first reading and approve the policy as presented.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Chumley, is second?
Second.
Mrs. Delaney, discussion? Mr. Romano?
Mr. Chumley?
Hold on. I was going to say, do we know the thought process behind removing the no-nits? Because nits are like prior to the bug becoming live, wouldn't they, what was the thought process behind removing that?
This is all about what's being recommended from a national organization, what our health nurses bring to us as a change that's happening at a bigger level.
Global level, okay.
What's happening is a lot of students are ending up missing a ton of school because of this, and it's not active cases, and so there's a restriction based on that.
And I believe, from a medical perspective, like you could have a nit that never becomes active.
You can kill the lice, and the nits will remain and not happen.
The nits will remain, and they are not contagious.
Got it. No, I was just thinking that, why would you want to bring kids back sooner so they're not missing school, but then infecting more kids, and you're going to have a global, you know, attendance issue because of it? But it makes sense that they don't materialize. Yeah, got it, okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Romano?
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Five yes?
Okay, before you today is the request to approve the student and parent handbook. Mr. Dool led the review and revision process for the 2223 student and parent handbook. Several staff members had the opportunity to review and recommend changes. Mr. Dool did review the Board of Education policy changes and ensure that the handbook reflected those changes as well. The Board of Education approval of the student and parent handbook is a new process that we will be bringing to the board every July. The Superintendent requests approval for the 2022, 2023 student and parent handbook as presented.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Patton is second?
Second.
Mrs. Delaney, any discussion?
I have a question, is, I read all 73 pages of this, because it, we always have parents that are, they have concerns about things, but they don't necessarily know that this exists. Is this going to be readily available in a very prominent place on our website? How are our families going to, like, how do we get this to our families so that they understand that this is a resource, that they need to go to there first before they vocalize concerns or complaints type of thing?
It'll be on the WEPAC hub as a resource, it'll also be sent out in newsletters at the beginning of the school year. I don't, what I'm trying to remember in the enrollment process, I can't remember if they have to sign off on it in there at all. I don't think it's ready, because it's not ready till this point, but I'm just trying to remember that.
I'm looking at Mr. Podoban because the high school is where, really, yeah.
Building level.
You had final forms? Use the final forms for the year.
Do they sign off on it?
They did sign off on it then. It's not in the forms yet, but it could, so.
Yeah, that was my memory, and I just couldn't remember if I was remembering a past situation.
Basically, just the final forms as they went through, they signed off on it, and that's, is, is Podoban.
I mean, I just think, I think it's very important that we continue to communicate this resource, because it answers a lot of questions that our families express concerns or complaints about. And if they, you know, if we, you know, put this on a pedestal and say, hey, you know, this is the world according to West Claremont, and then if they have questions from that, then, you know, then they should bring them to us, so.
Yeah, we can make a bigger push on this. It's always hard, you know, at the beginning of the school year, everyone's reading so much material, you get inundated, so maybe just some reminders throughout the school year might be helpful as well.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Mr. Romano?
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Five yes?
Tonight, Mr. Podoban is going to come and represent West Claremont High School as current assistant principal, but as we all know, the future. And I'm sure you feel like the principal this summer with all the things that Mr. Gephardt is having you do. To present the final data on the decision that we made in the middle of the year, you guys supported in January, well, I guess it was December, but to move in January to a extra time, extra help opportunity, flex schedule in the high school, to provide more autonomy for students, to make choices about seeking out extra help, and for creating more flexible time so that every minute of the day wasn't a scheduled bill, but time they could work in small group, support each other, and get help with writing assignments or whatever. So Greg will do a much better job telling everything, but we are very pleased to share some really positive results that came out of this.
Yeah, so I'm going to share the data that we have. I'll tell you that I think that our data is, it's very impactful. I don't know that it's 100% complete, because, you know, we're relying on kids signing in when they arrive, and so I do believe that our numbers are maybe a little lower than they actually show here. And so we're going to work on those processes and make sure that we collect even more accurate data next year. So the first slide that you'll see here, I'll basically show you the number of teacher requests and then the actual attendance from extra time, extra help. As you can see overwhelmingly, our kids are going to get help in math and science, not surprising. If you went to our math classrooms after school, you would see that they were packed. 10 to 15 kids in different rooms, getting help from their teachers, staying after. The bell rings at 3:05 to kind of dismiss from extra time, extra help, but I know that our teachers go above and beyond, they're not, okay, it's 3:05, get out. They're helping them until farther into that day. So we had a request process where we would put in requests, we would send a remind message home telling the parents to check their emails, and then we would email them to follow up saying, this teacher has requested your child for extra time, extra help, whether it be their English teacher, science teacher, whatever. And this is what we got, we got 3,268 times that kids signed in for extra help or extra time, extra help, and almost 1,000 different students. When we're in the building daily, there's about 2,100 kids in the building because of the Oaks and CCP, so that's almost 50% of our students who are signing in and using this. And if you look at this next slide, it shows you our grade distribution for second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter. We didn't start until, I think, January 27th, which was into the third quarter. So really, I think where it's impactful is our second quarter and fourth quarter. If you look at the, the, the orange is the number, or the percentage of Fs for the students that attended extra time, extra help, this is just one time, at least one time. And the yellow is, is the Ds, pinkish purplish is Cs, and then our two blues are our Bs and our As. But I want to take a look at the Fs, the percentage of Fs went from 15.5% in the second quarter to 11% for the kids that attended extra time, extra help. Also, the percentage of As went from 32.4% to 42.8% for the kids attending extra time, extra help. This data is different than our global data. So if you look at our school, our overall distribution, our percentage of Fs from second quarter to fourth quarter actually increased by 1%. Now, our percentage of As went up as well, but our percentage of Fs went up, and that's normal. I don't like it being up at 16%, but the percentage is normal because you know, end of the school year, kids get tired, the fatigue sets in. What we really thought was impactful was the kid, were the kids that were using this time repeatedly. So if you look at the kids that attended 10-plus times, and this is where the data really kind of pops out at you. We go from 11.8% failure rate to 5.5%. 10.6% with Ds down to 7.2%, and then our percentage of As and Bs jumps. So our charge now is, how do we get more kids here? How do we encourage this more? How do we, how do we, how do we do more with this? We did get some statements from students, and our student statements were excellent. I'm not going to read them all, but they're there for you to read and to browse through. We didn't have any complaints. The only complaint we had was that it didn't last longer. They wished it lasted till 3:30 and not 3:05. That was the only complaint I saw. They don't understand that that's a contractual issue, that we're bound by the contract. But I thought it was amazing, the one kid said, this was the best decision that the high school has made. That's three quarters of the way down the page there. So what are our next steps? Well, one, I think we need to make sure that we can improve and increase our participation, and we can collect more reliable data. I've put, we've put in a bookmark on all their Chromebooks to sign in for it, and we want to make sure that we're getting that reliable data. We want to put in place automatic triggers, so we're starting in the first quarter, we're starting immediately. So once a kid gets to that DF range, they're going to be invited to extra time, extra help, we're going to call home, we're going to make sure that we're doing those things. Again, accurate data collection. And then, we've created a math lab and writing lab during the school day that we're hoping can kind of partner with this to give our kids more supports where they could go during pack to get kind of more extra time, extra help. And then, we're going to look at enrichment options, ACT prep, AP preparation, ASVAB prep, all the things that our kids are asking for, we're going to try and look at different enrichment opportunities for those students. Any questions?
The survey that you did, is that anonymous, or was their names attached to that?
No, it was anonymous. We don't, we don't, we asked them basically, what did they think and how could we improvement?
Yep.
And some said, don't change anything, it's awesome, and some said, I just wish it lasted longer. And that was basically our two responses.
My mind was going towards the student that said this was the best thing ever. Was it a B-plus student that finally achieved that A, or was it an F student that got to that C level of actually learning something?
Now, it's funny, because we actually looked at that student, that was a C student that moved to an A.
That's perfect.
They spent a lot of time with one of our English teachers and really improved, and I'm really curious to see what their, and of course, data was, because they were a 10th grade English student, so they took that LA2 exam, so I'm really curious to see how they did.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Podoban. Superintendent's comments?
Thank you.
Well, really, all that I have for you is that in this, last week, you spent a lot of time, you met legislators across the community and connecting with them. We have plans this summer to do some of the police night out, or, I know I'm not saying that phrase right, they have different names, National Night Out. And we're looking to participate in those so that we are out there in our community this summer. Number one, getting more people to register, I know there was just a social media post this past week, we're really having a hard time getting people to register and let us know if the students are coming back or not. We were about 50% the last time, it might be a little bit over that. So we want to encourage that, as well as, we met last week to decide to expand our town hall opportunities for next year. So we're going to continue to offer not only the one that we have planned for September 22nd, but we're going to offer one in October, one in November, and then kick off a new version of town halls starting in December that will continue throughout the year. So it's vitally important to us that we have diverse group of people around the table talking about what is, you know, top of mind and concerns on people's plates as we, you know, live the school year, but also look ahead, look down the horizon and do some planning for West Claremont. So we are excited about the participation. I'll be bringing to you in August more of a summary of here's where we are, based on what we've learned at this point, and we're going to continue to just put every ounce of effort that we have into making sure that people feel welcome and a part of this process.
And those town halls, you open that up to community members?
Yes, yes.
That may not have children in the district that might want to put their voice and opinion on things?
Yes.
You welcome them to the table.
And we will continue to put advertisements in the newspaper, there should be a postcard coming out, I don't know if you guys have gotten it at your homes, there should be any day now, there will be a postcard coming into everyone's home in the community that reminds them about it, plus a few other things about our school district. And we'll be sending out the quality profile in late August, early September, so there will be a couple mailers, as well as newspaper, as well as social media. We're looking for any kind of opportunity to advertise. We've even thought about just doing some posters in the community, because we did have some business owners ask us for that. So we'll keep trying strategies until we hit the right stride, that's for sure. Thank you.
Treasurers' business?
Thank you. Item 8.01 is a list of advances for FY 2022. You will recall that we did have a request at the previous board meeting in June. These were some additional advances that as we closed the book, we saw that we needed to make. So these are additional advances to the state and federal funds where we did not receive, where we thought we would have received, the cash requests that we had made for June. So this is to, for those funds where we didn't get the cash request, we have to spend the money first and seek reimbursement from the state for those. So these are some additional funds that we identified we needed to advance to. So the recommendation is to approve the FY 2022 advances as presented.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Mrs. Delaney is second?
Second.
Mrs. Brinkman, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Romano?
Thank you. Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Five yes?
Treasurer's comments?
So just brief on the comments tonight, just want to commend two groups. First, the Treasurers' Office, kind of in the month of June and the beginning of July, we had two things going on at the same time, one was closing the books for FY 22, and then at the same time, really, building a new new ledger with a new budget process that we went through. All in all, the intent of that was, and Mrs. Brinkman, I think you'll remember probably about a year and a half ago when we had the Finance Committee meetings, one of the things I said was, we needed to start using our systems the way they were intended to be used. Cause, cause we, we have some software, but yet we were kinda tied to some legacy reports and different things that we were doing. Well, the reason I'm happy with the way things went is because as we move into FY 23, we're gonna be using the system the way it was intended to be used. So it took a little bit longer than I thought it would, but I think thing needed to be done the right way to do it. We had to really create new ledger accounts to do it the right way. The second commendation is really to the administrative staff and the exempt staff and the clerical support staff that really are in the departments that, let's just say, they tolerated the changes and are, and are working very diligently with us to make that happen. So we can sit back in our office and think we're doing all these wonderful things, but really, it's the impact and, and what they do out in the buildings, what they do in the different departments that make that true impact. So there was a lot of PD that went on in the past year. There's a lot more PD. That's gonna go on as, as we look forward. So kind of commendation to them for the past and for what they're gonna be going through in the future too with that. So I'm kinda really happy to say that as we move forward, you'll see some different financial reports that really are gonna be outputs from the system versus taking the data from the system and be kinda playing Excel gymnastics with that to create reports. So I'm happy that that is in motion and you'll see some different reports as we get into reporting in July and August and in the FY 23 with that. Okay, thank you.
Along with that, I was at a social function over the weekend with two recent retirees of West Claremont, and they were very above the board bragging about how well your department took care of them.
Good.
Took them and did it quickly. They, they were marveling at the speed and just how helpful they people were.
I appreciate hearing that. Thank you. I'll let them know that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I think we, one of the things we tried to turn a corner on is that, you know, we work for them. We don't set rules up for them to work for us. So it's really about customer service. We're trying to deliver to others. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, Board Business. First, we have recommendation to approve the amendment to the contract that the Superintendent just presented. Looking for a motion?
No.
Okay, Mrs. Delaney is second.
Second.
Mrs. Brinkman, any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So with this contract, I'd like to just kinda read something that I've kinda jotted down. I won't spend too much time. But basically, I wrote this. I would like to remind everybody, it wasn't too long ago that we as a district found ourselves in a fiscal crisis. In fact, I can recall an email that was sent out to the community member which stated this. West Claremont School Board approves proposed cuts if levy does not pass in March. This was the title of an email that was sent to the West Claremont Community Members on January the 13th, 2020. Just some quick highlights of the email, I'm not gonna read the entire thing. Natasha Adams, Superintendent, and at the time Kelly Sininger, our Treasurer, presented to the Board approximately 3.5 million in budget reduction that would need to be implemented for the 2021 school year if the March levy failed was to occur. We are ta, uh, we are taking proactive approach to prepare for the ramification if the requested funds is not approved by voters because we do not want there to be any surprises, said at the time Sininger. We will always remain committed to stretching the dollars and resources and operating a lean daily operational budget. But we are at a point where a situation is urgent and we have done all that we can do without community support, stated Mrs. Adams. This levy, if passed, would have maintained the services we had in place and would allowed us to remain current with our debt, not necessarily adding any services. As I prepared for this meeting, I was able to locate several interesting articles where school districts are currently facing financial issues and concerns surrounding our area. Most recently, the 2022 West Claremont State of the School Report was sent out to the community, which talked about our roadmap for success. In this pamphlet, it talked about the new financial realities for the district and how the state has changed its funding formula, which will impact the amount of financial support we as a district will receive. From the state, this change is shifting more financial responsibility to our schools and our communities. With the uncertainties of our financial realities in the near future, I will remain fiscally mindful of our taxpayers' money as we continue to move forward. We don't want to set the district up for financial failures and to have history repeat itself.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to acknowledge that Mrs. Adams does a fantastic job for us. She's given a lot of time over the last couple years. And when we evaluated and took a review of surrounding districts in our southwest Ohio area, we found that she was underpaid compared to many, especially given the amount of students that she takes care of, the number of buildings, the number of staff members. And I think that the increase in salary is very much warranted.
I think the, one of the huge reasons we're in the financial position that we're in currently is because of Ms. Adams and Mr. Romano. So I think this is warranted.
I would like to reiterate as well, this school district is not just a school district. We are a corporation, just as any other company or corporation is in, in the United States. And if you look at our CEOs and our CFOs and our company, you know, around in different companies, they, they, they have the weight of the world on their shoulders. They're making the decisions. And, and our leaders should be compensated equally for, for those positions. And we are, you know, I, I was, I'm a prior parent in this district of 22 years, and I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. And we are the best and the strongest we've ever been because of the two leaders that we have, that we as the Board have hired.
We, I agree.
I would agree also. I've been here for almost, it'll be 39 years in August. This is the best district it's ever been. I know I'm dating myself. Mrs. Adams was in that elementary school event when I started here, but it's, it's been, it's wonderful with you. And we really appreciate all your hard work, both of you. Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Romano?
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Four yes, one no.
Okay. Next, the recommendation to approve the amendment to the Treasurer's Contract as presented. Looking for a motion for that?
No.
Okay, Mr. Chumley is second.
Second.
Mrs. Delaney, any discussion?
Obviously, I'm not gonna reread it. It's the same concept. I think we need to remain mindfully of our financial status, where we're heading and what the near future holds for us.
I think, I think Mr. Romano has saved us so much money, and I think he's, continues to and will continue to. I think this is, again, well warranted.
As a member of the, of the Finance Committee, when I joined the Board in 2019, I was, I was aware of how school finance operates. And when I came to the Board and became a member of the Finance Committee meeting under Mrs. Sininger, she taught me a very, very large amount in a very short period of time. And when, when Mr. Romano joined the team, he brought a, a different level of knowledge to this district that we have not had in the past. He is truly a unicorn in, in the job of being a school district treasurer. And the amount of money that he has saved our district and found that our district was not receiving far outweighs an increase that we are proposing.
I agree. Mr. Romano, I really appreciate all of your hard work also. And you, like Mrs. Delaney said, you brought a lot of new thinking here. That's really helped. And I also appreciate your working relationship with the administrative team, and especially with Mrs. Adams. You two rock, and we're at a great place because of that. Thank you for finding that money and saving money and bringing new ideas to us.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Romano?
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Four yes, one no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Board Comments? Mrs. Brinkman?
I have none.
Mr. Chumley?
I could consider, continue to sit here and praise our staff all night, but I think we all probably wanna get home. I hope everyone had a good July 4th. I hope everyone's enjoying and relaxing on their summer break. I know us parents are counting the days, so. That's it for me.
Mr. Patton?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mrs. Delaney?
Just hope everybody's having a great summer and look forward to the school year kicking off and new exciting things happening.
This is a time of the summer where I start to get a little bit bored, believe it or not. Not that I wanna get up early, although I did get up early this morning. But I miss everybody and I'm very excited about the school year coming up. And I hope everybody's enjoying their summer as much as I am. And, and I think that's it. Okay? Anything else? And we do not need any second session. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
No.
Mrs. Brinkman is second.
Second.
Mr. Chumley, any discussion? Mr. Romano?
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.